Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the miserable with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, running late, we're about 10:22 today AM. We'll get right into the consent agenda, Melanie.
Approval of payroll, May 27th, 2022, approval of claims, May 19th, 26th, and June 2nd, 2022, approval of minutes for May 17th, 2022, weights and measures monthly report, April 16th to May 15th, 2022 filed, treasurer's monthly report, April 30th, 2022 filed.
Okay, that's the consent agenda, I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. We're going to get into commissioners' business now, we have an appointment to, of a citizen to the Plan Commission Board, must be of Democrat affiliation, the appointee will complete the term of Michael Marocna, which ends December 31st, 2022, and I'll open it to the floor for nominations.
I nominate Pam Fish.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Pam Fish to fill the Plan Commission Board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next, we have appointment of a citizen to the Board of Trustees, Porter County Public Library System, I'll throw it to the board for a motion.
I'd like to nominate Stu Summers for reappointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Stu Summers to be reappointed to the Porter County Library System Board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for your work on that one.
Next up, we have an appointment of a citizen to the Convention, Recreation, and Visitors Commission, this appointee will again, this will complete the term of Harry Peterson, who moved on to the City of Alperezo City Council, this term ends December 31st, 2022, at the end of the year. Did we have any applicants?
Yes.
We did? Okay.
David Snodgrass.
I'm motion to appoint David Snodgrass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an appointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau by the name of David Snodgrass, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. We have another appointment, did we get, okay, we did not get any applications for the appointment of the citizens to the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, so if there's anybody in this audience that wants to be on the alcohol beverage board, there's an opening. I figured I got a full room, so I might as well ask. It's a good board, I, you work with the state excise, it's really a good board, so I'm pitching. So, we will re, we will continue to advertise for this position, and hopefully our next meeting will have some board applications that'll come before us, and we can take action on that. Next up, we have an employee's request for a one-year extension on Remicod Treatments, is this for the insurance? And that's an extension, I think we're already doing it currently, right?
We've already done it, at least once.
So this is to extend it another year.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to, to extend Remicod Treatments from the request of the employee to the health insurance program, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Sheriff David Reynolds, this is a commercial lease on a, on, for the Porter County Meg Unit.
No. No, I was talking to someone, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to South Point Partners, this is a commercial lease for the Porter County Meg Unit Office, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Debbie Gunn, this is a request to modify the current training coordinator job description from two years supervisory experience to two years of certified training officer experience, good morning.
Good morning.
What do you have?
Actually, I'd just like to revert to an older job description that we'd used in the past, I think it opens up the applicant pool within the center to the training position, training coordinator position that is now vacant because of my promotion.
This is something you've talked HR with?
Correct, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Debbie.
Just real quick, Commissioner, Debbie was recently appointed as our new E-911 Director, and she was brought up from within, she started out there 12, 15 years ago, and, and kept at it, hard work, and paid off.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
What an adventure so far.
Welcome.
Facilities, this is Tracy Wood, interim director, this is a request to use a hydro management water, so we're changing vendors for our water glycol treatment systems, for our hot water systems, is that what this is?
Yes, originally, we, like, hydro management was the lower bidder.
Yep.
But we didn't have references back, so we went ahead and went with HOH, they're a more established company, of course, two days after that, I got the references back for hydro management, and since that April meeting, I've made several attempts for HOH to get them going, like, when are we going to get this started, no response, I can't get any communication with them, so I would like to switch that from HOH to hydro management, I've contacted him, the price is still good, he's all good with that.
And they were the lowest bidder.
He was, originally, yes.
Motion to approve hydro management water.
We can just do that.
And as part of your motion is to rescind the contract to HOH Water Treatment?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Keep on, I'm Tracy, thank you. Highway Department, Jim Polarek, we're going to receive and open bids for liquid bituminous pertaining to the Chip and Seal roads, so do we have the bids, Madam Auditor?
We have two bids.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you, first bid is from Bitmat Products of Indiana LLC. Oh, he's got, he's got a lot of per gallon numbers and everything, so can you?
Yeah, it should be, correct.
You want to read that on there, Jim? I can't find it.
Well, what we can do is we can go over it while?
You want to go over it while we're in?
I think we can come back up here and give the recommendation.
Okay, next one is Asphalt Materials, they're out of Indianapolis.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, we will review them and come back up.
Get back to us, yep.
Thank you.
You're probably needing those to get going, huh?
Hopefully within two weeks, correct.
Okay. Next up is Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson, we, what we're going to do here on the agenda here, if we have a full agenda, the heirloom subdivision is number two on the agenda, we're going to move it to the last, it's number four, we're just going to move it down the line, so we can finish the meeting with that, it's more housekeeping. So the first one up, that made here, the first one up is a request to vacate the right-of-way of Lumber Lane in Lake Eliza, the petitioner is Kim Marie Correles, this is second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second, we have a motion and a second on second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. This is where we're going to step over the heirloom subdivision on the, on the agenda, and we're going to go to Timberland Farms, Phase Four, this is a performance agreement and letter of credit.
I have reviewed, it's in good, it's in good form, Mr. Thompson has anything to add, but?
Mike's been the one that's been, yeah, Mike's been working very closely with the developer on this one, so I would recommend, recommending approval here this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion to approve on a Phase Four Performance Agreement and Letter of Credit, this is for Timberland Farms, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is Marquette Trail, this is Phases Five and Six, this is Lakeshore County Road to US Highway 12, this is a supplemental agreement, what's this for, Bob?
The original agreement we have with DLZ took it from US 12, or the county line road, and this is where we were winding through Beverly Shores and trying to use some of the closed roads or the low-volume roads, since, we had that agreement approved, since we have changed the route now, and we've decided that we're staying exactly where the trail is today, DLZ is offering the new supplemental agreement that actually defines this new route, which is on the existing trail, on the Nippsco property from Lake County Shore Road to US 12, and it is also a $39,000 reduction from the original agreement, so.
Good, and will this get us, will this get us a map and a budget?
Yes, I will be able to provide that to the commissioners here shortly showing.
Need a budget and a map?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and a second on Phases Five and Six of the Marquette Trail, this is a supplemental agreement with a cost reduction, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, last on the list, heirloom subdivision, this is a zoning map amendment from RR Rural Residential to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential, the petitioner is 325 LLC, this is first reading.
This is Plan Commission Resolution 22-01, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on this in April, and forwarded to the county commissioners with a favorable recommendation to rezone, or a zoning map amendment for a parcel of land from RR Rural Residential to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential, this is, the petitioner is Project 325 LLC, heirloom major subdivision, again, the Plan Commission forwarded this up to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation with a 6-1 vote.
Correct. Okay, so I think we need to, what do we, want to start the presentation and then move into?
Yeah, let's have the presentation, and then we'll move the public comment.
Great. Okay, Mr. Leath?
Yeah, good, very good, my name is Todd Leath, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, I appeared at the Plan Commission as well, at that time, there was a large public comment for the petition, and the matter was continued, we did some additional research to answer some of the questions that came up, and presented that back to the Plan Commission, which then, as Mr. Thompson indicated, resulted in the six-to-one favorable recommendation to you to rezone this property, it's just shy of 80 acres in size, one of the things that I think was troubling at the Plan Commission, at least at the first hearing, was the size and scope of what 80 acres is, 80 acres is a large parcel, it, you can fit 61 football fields on 80 acres, the concept plan that we're proposing, that my client is proposing, has 146 lots, which results in a density calculation of 1.8 homes per acre. When we go to request a rezoning or a zoning map amendment, there are five things that you are by law supposed to look at or pay reasonable regard to, first and foremost in that is your own comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan shows that this property is located in what is referred to in that plan as a suburban development area, I would actually argue that since the plan was adopted, this is actually an urban fringe area, but even if I pull back and agree with what the comprehensive plan says, suburban development area, your comprehensive plan suggests that that area is intended for zoning densities or housing densities of two to three homes per acre, as I indicated, we're 1.8, we're underneath the lowest number in that range, and the city of Alperezo has creeped forward three-quarters of a mile towards this property since that plan was adopted, so that's why I argue it's urban fringe now, and not even suburban residential, but frankly, the real game changer in all of this is the availability of utilities, the city of Alperezo and my client have negotiated an opportunity to extend the utilities to this property, public utilities would include drinking water and sanitary sewer service, what that does then is allows for the higher density residential, and if we don't do that, then all we're doing is perpetuating urban sprawl, in my opinion, and we provided at that second meeting of the Plan Commission, some examples of what we believe are well-done subdivisions, both in the city and in the county, and those that are all served by public sewer and water, and all of them have densities that are greater than the proposed heirloom subdivision that's before you. That's in essence what we were able to then show to the Plan Commission that resulted in their favorable recommendation, I have some handouts if we need to look at some of those examples.
Before you finish, Todd, I would like you to spend a little bit of time on the process, I spent a little bit of time at the Plan Commission explaining the process, but this is the second hurdle.
Sure.
Keep with the same theme, so assuming you were to get a favorable recommendation on the, or to get the vote for, to rezone this, we obviously still have to come back for second reading, but then, could you spend some time now explaining the rest of the process as you understand it, that you would need to go through with the planning and stormwater department?
So, thank you, I'm happy to do that, this is the first step in a long process to get to a development where my client can put a shovel in the ground and build the 146-lot subdivision that they're proposing, we have a concept plan now, if you are agreeable with the Plan Commission's recommendation, and this property is rezoned, then my client turns back to their civil engineering firm and asks them to complete the engineering process, what we have is a well thought-out, a well-laid-out plan that has 32% open space, and those 146 lots with a grid system of roads, drainage easements and so forth, but what they need to do is knuckle down and find the exact calculations for stormwater, the geometry for all of the roads, and come up with a final plan, that final plan may have 140 lots instead of 146, but we know that we've got plenty of open space, and we know where the high points are and the low points are, but we have to design, the civil engineering firm, my client, has to design the subdivision, and we'll go through that process, knowing what the zoning ordinance requires, what the stormwater manual requires, and they will put together a primary plat that's fully engineered, and everything will be down to a hundredth of a foot, and all of the drainage calculations right down to the penny, we then submit that application to Mr. Thompson's office and Mr. Novotny's office, and it goes into separate review processes, Mr. Thompson's office reviews it for the zoning ordinance requirements, to make sure that all of the roads and streets are laid out, that all of the lots have the requisite frontage, they're the right sizes to meet the zoning ordinance, and so forth, all of the things have to be met, with the zoning ordinance, with the subdivision control ordinance, a portion of the unified development ordinance, as well as Mr. Novotny's office gets to take that drainage plan and review that as well, and we get independent review letters from both sides of their office, commenting on the fact that we've either met something, or, or a design doesn't meet with their, their liking, and we revise the plans, and then we get a second review letter, once we have both a clearance letter from the development review side of the office, and a clearance letter from Mr. Novotny's office, that the stormwater is agreeable and meets code, meets the design manuals, once we have both of those clearance letters, then Mr. Thompson's office sets it for a public hearing back at the Plan Commission, and all of the folks that received the notice in the mail of the hearing for tonight, or for today's meeting at the Plan Commission, they'll get another notice back at the Plan Commission, and they get to comment upon the final design of the subdivision that we're calling heirloom subdivision, so this is only the first step in what will take months to get back to a public hearing for the, for the subdivision process, to get that approved.
So that process, that first step, assuming everything continues to move in that direction, would be the primary plat petition?
It would.
And just to be, just to clarify, I understood what you were saying, however, when you say Mr. Novotny's office is happy, or Mr. Thompson's office is happy, what we're really saying is, Mr. Novotny's going to be following our stormwater ordinance, if it doesn't meet the ordinance, then you have other options, but that would require additional hearings, additional public notification, maybe, at BZA, if it's not a, a, a design waiver, same thing with Mr. Thompson, if we have a design, a developmental standard that you're unable to meet, that's when it would be flushed out.
Yes.
And you either correct it, and if not, you attempt to gain relief, but that relief also requires notice to the surrounding property owners pursuant to our ordinance and in another public hearing, so I just want to make it clear, it wasn't your intention, but Mr. Thompson and Mr. Novotny don't exactly have a lot of latitude as they're reviewing, and I know you didn't mean it to insinuate that, but they're basically going through a voluminous amount of documents on a checklist to make sure everything is meeting all of the finite issues, so, in a nutshell, if this continues to progress, what will we, what we would be relying upon is the, our unified development ordinance and our stormwater manual for whatever the rezone may or may not be, correct?
That is absolutely correct, the design manual is, is many, many, many pages, it's very voluminous, the unified development ordinance is equally meaty, and as you indicated, Mr. McClure, there is a menu, there is a checklist, that, what, what Mr. Novotny's office does is, you know, 98% science and 2% art, quite frankly, and the, the civil engineers just have to get it right, and Mr. Novotny is the one who makes sure that our engineer gets it right.
And ultimately, the process is, is once Mr. Novotny and Mr. Thompson approve it to go to primary plat at the Plan Commission, just like any other primary plat process, that's them saying, we believe it's met all of it, and then that's where the Plan Commission gets a review of it to make sure that the, all the ordinances and manuals have been met, and that's just to get the primary plat.
And that's to get the primary plat, and the Plan Commission's process and, or purpose and all of that is, they're the ones who get to hear the public comment, and that comment is received by the Plan Commission, but reviewed in the light of what the ordinance requires, and that's what we're trying to do tonight, or today, rather, is find out what that menu is with regard to the zoning for this property, given the fact that utilities are now available.
And lastly, I just want to use this as an example, because you're on a concept plan, because we're here just on the very first step of what zoning that you would be then turning the page to, to follow the checklist on, as far as the requirements, you have a concept plan, you don't, you're not going to be able to answer today exactly where a culvert goes, or exactly where a swale is, just to be clear on the timing, until you know the zoning, that doesn't get engineered, so back to my earlier comment about, once, if it gets past this, then it goes through the meat grinder of stormwater and planning as far as that goes, that's when, basically, we are relying upon our ordinance, which I think is a good thing, that stormwater has to meet our requirements, our requirements, I think, are still four or five times, our release rate's still four or five times lower than the city of Alperezo, so basically, take our code, which, our stormwater code, which is maybe the most stringent in the state, and they have, and your client would have to meet those requirements, and Mr. Novotny's job is to make sure your client has met those requirements, and if, for something, if they want to seek relief from those requirements, again, we have another public hearing with notification.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, I think we're going to move into the public comment portion here, we are going to limit the, anybody that comes up, you have three minutes, we're going to put you on a time clock, what we'd really like to do here is if, you know, we all know that we have stormwater issues that need to be discussed, but I think what we're trying to eliminate here is just the repetitiveness of, of what's going on, so I know we all have probably better things to do here, but we're just trying to make sure that we get, you know, it's precise, we're, if this many people talking, we, we need to put some time limits on it, and that's what we're going to do, so, Kurt's going to keep time, we have microphones there, and we have microphones here at the front, on each end of the, you can see them up here at the front, when you come up, just give your name and your address, and then you can go into what you want to say, okay, so with that, we're going to?
Did you say three minutes?
Three minutes, yes, so with that, we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting, we're going to open up a public hearing now, so now we're in a public hearing, what I'm going to do first is I'm going to give three opportunities for anybody to come up here to speak in favor of the rezone, okay, so this is in favor, we're going to do these three first, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone?
Could I, I, I'm just asking for clarification?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, my name's Dean Williamson, 333 East, 400 North, so I'm, I'm listening to the 146 homes per 80 acres, but then you, then you have 32% open space, so what is the actual acreage per home, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of, that doesn't really add up, it's, it's a great number if you want to use it that way, but it's, it really doesn't seem to be factual, it, it's a little off, don't you, I mean, I just want a clarification on that, and, yeah, all the rest of this stuff will come later, so.
Bob, could you?
Let's, let's, let them ask their questions, and then they'll take notes, and then they'll answer them all between Mr. Thompson and Mr. Leath.
Okay, okay.
So that we have a comprehensive list.
We want, we want that answered, though. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone, we have someone right here coming up?
And then he can queue, well, the next person can come right up here and get ready.
Get ready, yeah, if you want, so.
Deborah Pace, I live at 449 North, 325 East, which is adjacent to this property, and when Mr. Leath, I, I wanted to talk about the character of this area, because I know all of the specifics about flooding and traffic and so on are going to come from other people, so I'm here to talk about the character, and when Mr. Leath talks about suburban development and urban sprawl, he obviously has not has not driven through our area, because that's not what it is. It is a rural residential area. And I implored all of the commissioners to drive down 325 East and 500 North, on the areas adjacent to this property, to check it out for themselves. We are all single-family homes on large lots, compliant with rural residential. And I see no reason that this developer needs to change the zoning law, to put in a development right in the midst of us. This is not a vacant lot that's on a corner with nobody hardly around it. This is a lot that is surrounded by homes that are rural residential. So why not build this development according to those criteria? Not change the law to allow 146 homes to be put in our midst? We moved to that area 28 years ago, and I've watched that field. I've watched soybeans and corn grown in that field for 28 years. And I knew that the day was coming, that I'd have to watch houses be planted there instead. I can't fight that. I have no right to fight that. The land has been purchased, it will be built on. But I do oppose changing the zoning law to profit the builders. It is of no benefit to those of us who live there to put in that many houses. And Mr. Leith also talked about making, or somebody talked about making Mr. Novotny happy and making Mr. Thompson happy. Well, what about making the residents happy? I have petitions here, signed by people, we had over 350 signatures, people opposed to this rezone. Not opposed to the build, but opposed to the rezone. Our voices should matter, and I would hope that the commissioners who represent us are listening to our voices. Thank you.
Next up.
All right. Good morning, commissioners, attorneys. My name's Steve Tripp. My wife and I live at 350 East, 500 North, here in Valparaiso. I come here today opposed to this rezoning. I'm just going to show some basic things, but this is the roughly, I know you can't see this, but the 80 acres is here, which is a lot of houses. And then there's also subsequent development that'll probably happen on another 60 or 70 acres that'll be coming forth over the next coming years. I just want to really quickly clarify, 80 acres of total land is obviously set up for development. I'm not an engineer, or a mathematician, or a scientist, but I was just figuring roughly 40% of that land, or about 32 acres, is going to be needed to put in streets, water retention, and green space. So that leaves 48 acres remainable for home site development. If you take that 48 acres, divide that by the 146 homes, that comes up to 3.04 homes per buildable or usable acre. We get in our area, I just looked up on Google, about 40 inches of water rainfall per year. So assuming most of the 40 acres is going to drain off of the development now into other areas, this would total approximately 52,356,680, plus or minus a few thousand gallons of stormwater to be diverted to neighboring properties in the area. And that's just from this particular parcel. That land is also drains, another 40 acres is just north of that parcel, goes along my property, as well as across 500, which will probably be a future development as well, but not for here today. I want to really quickly reference, since Rick Trapp, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, did send a letter to, in March of this year, to Monica G., the zoning administrator, and I'm just going to, you know, say his words that he said in this letter, which is probably all, you may have all seen it, which is about stormwater in this area. And I know we're all working on it in concern. But his comments were, "There's no legal drain, maintain private path or natural favorable grade for drainage of this new development called 325 LLC." Basically, we have a lot of stormwater coming out of this area. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but he also, I was also forwarded some pictures of flooding. Obviously, nobody can see this, but there's a lot of water that the neighbors south of this development on 325 have to endure constantly. And it comes from all directions, from the east, from the west, and from the north. So basically, to summarize-
Commissioner, that's time.
Go ahead and finish up.
Okay. My, my, my recommendation is that the board deny the zoning for the R2. I would be in favor of a more favorable, different type of zoning, since we're only looking at three homes per acre. Why couldn't we consider then an R1, or whatever? You know, to be three homes per acre, and that would still satisfy the, what they want to build, and the sewage and water requirements for city utilities. And have 15,000 square foot per acre, per lot, instead of 11,000, which would be four units per acre, which would probably happen in the future. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jason Gray, I live at 395 Bart's Road. I would like to point out a few of the misrepresentations that Mr. Leith has brought to these meetings in the past. First, as to the character of the neighborhood and his proposed development, he talks about the Hawthorne subdivision as being a fair comparison to what we have and what they want to build. It is absolutely not a fair comparison. That Hawthorne subdivision is a part of the city of Valparaiso. We are Washington Township, we are not. Also, that is a very densely populated subdivision. If you look at the ones nearby the build site, the proposed build site, you look just to the south, on the other side of the stop sign, there is an Augustine subdivision, beautiful homes, beautiful place to live. They are spread out, and they comply with rural residential zoning, which is what we have. Hawthorne does not. Also, he has talked about the ticking time bombs, as he refers to our well and septic systems. Most of the time, these well and septic systems are good for the life of the house, if properly maintained. I would like to see how these city services at Aberdeen compare to that. Should we ask those residences? I've never been on a boil order. I've never had to replace a septic system, and I've been on well and septic my entire life. He comes here and throws out these, what he calls, "facts." They are absolute lies for the pure benefit of what they are trying to build, just so his client can make a profit at our expense. We do not want these things in our neighborhood. And also, running these services, it does encroach on people's property. We don't have city services in our yard. We don't have government machines out there digging up our property, putting these things in the ground, tearing up our trees. It's going to cause erosion issues, as they dig these holes to put these pipelines in, tearing up the root systems, and backfilling it with sand, which we don't have. What's the runoff of that? And that is not going to go under Mr. Novotny's evaluation of the build site, because it's not on the build site. We don't want this stuff in our neighborhoods. We have come to you and begged you not to do this to us. Please listen to us and protect, uphold the laws that are meant to protect us from builds like this. Thank you.
My name is Nick Foolish. I'm just north of this, on 535 North, 300 East. And we all know there's problems there. First off, I sent messages to all three of you, and Mr. Biggs is the only one who responded. I thank you. Pay close attention to the last two pictures. Years ago, in dealing with Mr. Breitsky, he made the comment, "They cannot undo what's already been done, but they're going to pay attention in the future." Well, we all have a lot of flooding around there, and if anything additional enters these unregulated ditches across from us, it's going to be a nightmare. And along with it, 45 acres just sold across me that are going to be developed. On a corner of 300 and 500, the original acreage there where St. Mary's was built, and the second partition, and there's a third partition that was going to be approximately 300 houses, which at that time was being talked about section eight housing. You go by there right now, the farms have not done anything with it. Why is that? Because there's going to be some houses there. This heirloom subdivision, on the north side, there's two streets that stop. And in the last meeting, Mr. Leith made a comment that he wasn't really sure. Well, if this subdivision's approved, you know those roads are for the next addition to it. So that whole area around there is going to become housing. And then, finally, as I've said in a letter to you guys, traffic. Right now, in front of my house, it's almost like a drag strip. I welcome any of you to sit in my driveway for an hour and watch. So what's going to happen with these additional subdivisions, people coming from the north on 49, they're not going to go up to the stoplight at 500, they're going to turn on 600 and come down 300 over there. And I'm serious, you should see how some of them come through. And that's pretty much all I have to say. And again, did you see the last two pictures?
Yeah.
I don't know how it happened. But that was after the flooding almost all the way up to my house. Did a bird drop it? Did the water? Thank you. They don't know it, but we're talking about a fish laying in my driveway.
Next up, Damon Andress.
Hi, I'm Wendy Pianti. My address is 445 North, 325 East. I'm the adjacent property to the subdivision. Just a few, like everyone else, you know, there's beautiful subdivisions in that area with homes on acre-plus properties with well and septic. But I do have a question. When you said, "I understand the water issues," that there's other steps that it goes to. However, doesn't it have to be rezoned first before we go to that? So once it's rezoned, we can't go back. So I just don't understand what is the advantage to changing it? We moved to that area for that reason, to keep the rural residential, because we did not want, we don't want to have all the city utilities. So I don't understand, if you change the zoning, and then, then we're going to worry about the water issues and all the other issues? Shouldn't we be proactive instead of reactive? Thank you.
My name's Cam, I live at 44 North, 325 East. The classic definition of spot zoning is a process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification, totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. Spot zoning is, in fact, often thought of as the very opposite of planned zoning. When considering spot zoning, courts will generally determine whether the zoning relates to the compatibility of the zoning of surrounding uses. Other factors may include the characteristics of the land, the size of the parcel, and the degree of the public benefit. Perhaps the most important criteria is determining spot zoning is the extent to which the disputed zoning is consistent with the municipality's comprehensive plan. I have passed to you some pictures retrieved from the Porter County Department of Development and Stormwater Management website. It shows on the website that this information was last updated on January 12th of this year. On page one, you will notice that on the east side of 49, in all of Porter County, and particularly the proposed area, there are no other R2 developments. There are several R1 developments with larger lots and are compatible with the surrounding areas. On page three, I have highlighted the proposed subdivision in pink. The subdivision to the south of the property, which is called Eastwood, and highlighted in purple, would be utilized by any resident within the proposed area as an entrance/exit. It has about the same acreage, but with only 64 homes. I again refer to spot zoning and how the proposed subdivision is not compatible with the existing subdivision that it would be connected to. My previous house is only 1,100 square feet on a third of an acre, such as the lots that are being proposed. I know what it's like to live in a third acre. Even if a bigger home was to be built on these lots, the homes would definitely be well within the 90 feet of each other that the attorney mentioned in a prior meeting. While looking at the sketch plat on page four, there is only one lot on a rounded corner that measures in at almost a half acre or .46. The vast majority of the lots are a quarter acre in size. At the two prior meanings about the proposed area, the attorney showed a graphic showing how 61 football fields within inside 80 acres. I say to everyone that if you want to see how much 80 acres encompasses, go drive through Eastwood. It is every bit the same size. Please consider keeping the proposed area in a RR, or at least an R1 at the minimum. Just recently, on the corner of 325 and 400, it was proposed to have four lots, but they have reduced that to three lots with three acres each. The buyer has bought this land with the hope of rezoning to two. Please don't let it happen, and remember spot zoning and all the people who live there now. Thank you.
Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Oh, he's here right now. We got two. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Jim Pitcher. I live at 444 North, 325 East. You know, it's striking to me how many people have come to oppose this. And I asked the commissioners, "How many have come to support it, other than the developer and his hired attorney?" I said, "That speaks, that speaks volumes, in my opinion." You know, there aren't many, there aren't many things that today's, in today's political system, that liberals and conservatives can agree on. But one thing that most people agree on is the fact that constituents don't believe that committees and their elected officials are actually representing their interests. This is an opportunity for you to do that. Okay? This, come on, folks. You know, there's, there might be a reason why, at the national level, and even at the state level, that, that people, that the representatives are detached and not necessarily close enough to the problem to see what's going on. This is not the case here in Porter County. You guys can drive by it in a five to 10-minute trip. There's no excuse for not recognizing the impact to the community, to the neighborhood. And we're asking you to be part of the solution and not, not creating a bigger problem, as has been described by some of these other folks. So, you know, I've been told more than once by, by folks that live in our area, you know, "This is, this committee is going to rubber stamp this. This has already been decided, the guys with the money are going to win, and the neighborhood's going to lose." I hope they're wrong. I look around, I look at these folks, I go, "I hope they're wrong." Because a lot of people care about this. I live, as my, as my wife spoke earlier, for 30 years, I saved money living in a subdivision, hating every minute of it. And we finally, three years ago, bought our house. Three years later, now we're hearing that they're going to essentially turn our neighborhood into the same thing that I spent 30 years trying to get out of. Come on, folks. Is this really the right plan for this, this zoning plan? I mean, it's just frustrating. I'm asking you to support the people that have gone out of their way, to share how important it is to them not to change the character of our neighborhood. Please don't let the money associated with the developer change the master zoning plan. There's plenty of property in the Valpo area more appropriate for an R2 or higher-density homes. My father was a building contractor and developer for 50 years. I'm not against development, by any stretch, nor am most people that are here. But, you know, the attorney said that this is the only thing that can, that can work. That's a bunch of garbage. I mean, the guy that built my home happens to be a friend of ours, okay? He, as well as my father, said the same thing. The developer that's talking about doing this has a backup plan, and it's, there's still other things they can do and still be profitable. It doesn't have to be an R2 subdivision. So please be good caretakers, and be consistent, and be good leadership for the community. We're asking. Again, I really, it's important to the neighborhood, and we're asking for your support. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Roger Neeland at 428 North, 325 East. I, thank you, Jim. My friend, I don't know how I can do any better than that. Just a couple of things, and most things have already been covered, I'm sorry about that, but given the level of the traffic on the surrounding roads right now, this traffic is going to be just incredible. Think about how they're going to come out on 325 and- Think about how they're going to come out on 325 and, for the poor folks that live in that subdivision, coming down through there, that's, that's just unacceptable, especially from a safety standpoint. And the county highway, extra county highway maintenance involved. What is exactly the comprehensive plan today? We've heard about that, and it's 20, I guess, as I understand, about 20 years old. But what is it right now, today? And that's a plan that doesn't take into school population density. I don't know that that's really an acceptable way to operate, to be honest with you. Spot zoning, this is, and Kim went through a detailed thing about spot zoning. Thank you, Kim. But this is just, this is just an example of exactly what they're talking about in spot zoning. And I understand spot zoning is not illegal in Indiana, as I understand it. But it's generally accepted as a, something to be avoided. And the positive comments, well, that's pretty obvious, I guess, how many positive comments there were. Not even the developer's here to make a positive comment on his own. He's not required to be, I'm not saying that, but boy, you'd like to have a little bit of enthusiasm, a little bit of heartfelt development, or somebody to say, boy, if I could only get a house, if I could only have a house I could afford out in Washington Township, and this is going to let me do it. Where are the advocacy groups that are speaking for this development? I don't see them. I haven't heard them. I haven't heard anybody. I haven't heard anybody, I haven't seen anybody. Boy, there's been a lot of comments on, on various social media sites. I haven't seen any, any positive comments. Thank you.
You're next.
My name is Josh Hitnick. I live at 376 East Augustine Drive. To let this property be rezoned to R2 is just going to open the door for surrounding properties to be rezoned as well. A city-sized lot does not belong in the surrounding rural areas in the county. At the April 27th meeting, Mr. Leef showed some comparable subdivisions with comparable lot sizes. But what he did not make clear was none of those comparable subdivisions were in Washington Another thing to consider is the impact on our local schools. Children in the subdivision would go to Washington Township schools. It's my opinion, the schools can't handle that big of an increase in kids. As far as roads go and drainage, I can see a few problems stemming from the subdivision with this many homes. 325 East, 400 North, 500 North, and 400 East are all narrow roads that already have a good bit of traffic for what they are. These roads would need to be widened at the very least to make them safer for the residents, especially with adding that many high school drivers. Now, it's a concern that a lot of people are having a stormwater drainage. We've heard numerous people bring up the concern at the meeting on, at the meeting on February 23rd. I was one of them. The creek that runs through Washington Township serves as a major purpose in carrying the stormwater away from the area. I haven't seen any major maintenance done to this since I've been in my home. The creek overflows yearly, flooding people's yards, retaining paths in the roads. The creek has downed trees, weeds, and debris throughout the entire length. The creek also needs to be dredged and cleaned. The culvers need cleaned out as well. One question I have is if this is rezoned, would the owners of these city-sized lots have to pay the stormwater system user fee of $120 a year like the rest of us?
Yes. I can answer that one.
I'm glad to hear that. I strongly urge the commissioners to deny the rezoning of Harlem subdivision. The residents of Washington Township do not want a city subdivision in our township. It will open Pandora's box. Please listen to the township residents, our voices strong and clear. We oppose the rezoning of the property located at 325 East, 500 North. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Burduski, and I live at 437 North Field Lane, and that is the Eastwood Hill subdivision. I've lived there 32 years and am less than a year from retiring. You put this subdivision in, and I'm going to have a street that is no longer a dead-end subdivision street, quiet and peaceful day and night. And I sent in a letter along with several signatures from those people who live on North Field Lane to not have this subdivision go in. You're talking at least 300, approximately 300 cars for the whole subdivision. Even if you took a quarter of those and took 75 cars up and down my street every single day, back and forth, it would just create havoc and danger. We have no sidewalks, our kids play on the street, they ride their bikes, they're back and forth across yards. My grandkids are there now with me. I just, I tried to represent the people that lived on North Field Lane, but I do not want this rezoned, and I ask that you please do not rezon this to an R2. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Illick. I live at 423 North, 325 East. Everybody's been talking about the same stuff. I apologize for the repetition, but do you guys ever drive these roads? I mean, it's like, I remember the fight with the apartment complex that went up right next to 49. And guess what? They took care of the road, right up to the apartment complex. After that, it's crap. I mean, all you can do is drive it. I don't know how your snowplows survive the winter. I mean, with their blades scraping and everything, it's like, it boggles my mind, and I've got a snowplow, and I've got to maintain it. You guys have a whole county full of snowplows. But you go to the stop signs, like she said, we got no sidewalks, our streets are narrow. Guess what? There's no edging on them. If you go off, you're probably going to end up in a ditch, because a lot of people do. Septic longevity, I, you guys go through all that every time septic plans are approved for houses. Everybody has to prove that their septic system is going to be reliable, it's going to be adequate, it's going to have extra capacity. Nobody goes for a minimum. The, the lack of any positive support for this project is staggering. I usually don't get into government, et cetera. The other thing is about spot zoning. Doesn't that generally indicate something small? Not 80 acres? I mean, I, I don't know what the requirements are, I should have looked it up, but spot to me indicates like, oh, five, two, 10, 20 maybe, you know? We've got a new subdivision going down on 325 at Evans. That's all there. Guess what? It's going to happen. It must be approved. Other subdivision they were talking about off of 400. Where does all their runoff go? Into our backyards. I mean, they talk about the creek. Yeah, I remember the kids, when my kids were small, they'd go play in the creek, go play down at the creek, you know? When it floods, it's not a small flood. It already crosses 325 and floods that out almost annually. Like I said, I wish you guys would drive the roads because, I don't know, 20-ton dump trucks aren't going to do it any good. Nick, Nick's a good example, he sees it on his street, 300. You know, it's like, you guys, it was zoned residential, R1, rural residential, to begin with for a reason. Why does that have to change? There's lots of vacant land all over Porter County. You guys approved stuff years ago on the other side of 49 and 500. Nobody's done anything with that. It just sits there with streets and nothing. I just, I'm not one for urban sprawl. I don't, I don't think that the suburbs of Valpo need to become urban, and I rise in opposition to the zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betty L. Conley. I live at 318 East, 500 North. We have lived there since 1966. 56 years, okay? And the land we live on is, was an 80-acre parcel. It's across the street on 325 and 500. That person subdivided those lots, that 80 acres into 13-acre lots? Acre lot, but nobody bought an acre lot. Acre and a half was the smallest. Three acres, five acres. And now, across the street, they want to do all this small housing. Our children used to ride their bikes on 500 North. It is so busy now, people can hardly cross the street to get to their mailboxes. So I ask you to decline the R2. Thank you.
My name is Judith Furless. I live at 535 North, 300 East. I am opposed to the R2 rezoning. We need to maintain the integrity of our rural area. Washington Township is like a beautiful, quiet rural area. Last night, I had a deer walking through my backyard. We don't need rezoning that's going to result in an area like Hawthorne, which has a whole, a very high density of homes, cookie cutter-style homes, all on top of each other. That would just ruin the ambiance of our whole area. It's beautiful, it's quiet, traffic creates noise. At night, when you're trying to sleep, it's peaceful, you don't hear vehicles, traffic all night long. So I think that we need to really think a lot about what R2 would do to that area, how it would impact it. Has there been any type of impact study done to see what's going to happen as a result of a, of a development like that? You know, the impact on the people that live there, on services? All of these things should be considered. Another thing too, I think that the developers should have more of a plan in place before they start asking for the rezoning, rather than get it rezoned and then look at a final plan for the, you know, for what they're going to do with the development. I just think that that's kind of putting the horse before the cart. So anyway, once again, I am opposed to the R2 rezoning. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Arlene Fleegy, and I live at 548 North, 450 East. Two years ago, we sat in front of this very board, and the reason why we sat in front of this board was because we were subdividing our land also. We had to publicly, or I'm sorry, privately fund all of those soil sample testing, topography testing, all of the testing, only to subdivide for three neighbors. That's it, on 20 acres. And so now, it sounds like there's a checklist, I heard, that this particular development has to, has to complete. However, we don't know what the results are for that. And so if you rezone this, then you are pushing the ball forward, rather than having all of the answers before you make this decision. We had to do that privately, and we did not receive funding from the sale of 140 houses to do that. It was a risk. It was a risk we took for neighbors, and we still have the same zoning in our area. Thank you.
We got them coming. You can go ahead and come up. You can come up. You can come up. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julie Perrin, 538 East, 600 North. I'm here to ask you to consider the negative effects of adding the children from, to 146 families into the school. There's physically not room for the children in that many homes. Right, so if you consider the average family is two and a half kids, some might have zero, let's say one kid per fam, per house. So at 146 houses, that would be about 12 kids per grade at an Washington Township school. There's not room for that. As of this school year that just ended, there already was not enough space in my child's classroom. So all this information is coming from inside the school. In my child's classroom, there already wasn't enough space for all the kids to put their stuff in the closet, for kids. There was already one kid putting their stuff in the teacher's storage closet. So imagine adding 12 more kids into that classroom. Right, where are they going to put their stuff? Where are the kids actually going to sit in the class? Second, the cafeteria is crowded, and it's impossible to add another lunch period, because the first lunch is already served at 10:35 in the morning. So anything before that is breakfast. Where will those children, 12 per grade on average, from those houses eat? Third, much like the rest of the school, the playground is already too crowded. My child tells me that every day, at least one child from his classroom returned from recess late, interrupting class because they needed medical attention from the nurse. In my own family, there were multiple injuries this past school year due to overcrowding on the playground. Two of the more serious injuries were a busted lip, for which my child had to leave school early to get medical attention at an urgent care facility, as well as a concussion in my other child, which can cause long-term damage and cause my child to miss school and my husband to miss work for her care. This was due to overcrowding on the playground. My child also saw a student removed from the playground on a stretcher due to an injury caused by overcrowding on the playground. I urge you to keep the current zoning regulation. It is not physically safe or academically prudent to squeeze the children, about 12 per grade, into the already-credit classrooms, cafeteria, and playground. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Penny Kuesmek, and I have a home at 258 House Street in Valparaiso. And I was going to mention, I don't have a dog in this fight. I've just been coming to every meeting, and anybody that's here can attest to this. We've come to everything since last October when we decided to get involved. And I will mention that I agree with these people, that the stormwater issue is clearly a strong point. And from my being here all this time, I've listened to the reality that Porter County does not have enough money, that it's, it's so way far out of what is reasonable to deal with the problems that exist in Porter County at this moment. There's lots and lots of issues that they do not have at this time money to fix. And if you create another problem, all these people are correct in the fact that no one's going to be there to fix this problem for them. And I think it needs to be, it's a reasonable request for these people not to change the zoning, unless you've got money to help them out if you create a problem for them. So, and then the second thing is, is when developers, it's been brought to my attention, that when developers don't put the project incorrectly and don't spend the money that they need to, to fix the problem ahead of time, that they, eventually, when the problem gets expensive for people in the subdivision, that they do something called giving it as a gift to the county, which then puts the responsibility of fixing the problem on the entire county and not on the developer. And I'm not anti-development, and I think Valpo's a wonderful town. I can't blame people for wanting to live here. I've, I've enjoyed living here since the 70s. But this is a reasonable request on the part of these people. Thank you.
He's going to come, you can go after him, and then you can...
Morning. Chief Robert Hostow with the Washington Township Fire Department. I live at 3703 Engle Drive. So, these people have legitimate requests. They don't want it. From my standpoint as emergency services, we're all volunteer. Quite a few years ago, City of Valparaiso approached me and wanted me to join their fire territory. I told them to go pound sand, and I'll tell you why. Because every one of your taxes would have went up three times, three times the limit. And I said, no, I can't do that to the people who take care of us out in Washington Township. We all know that EMS division is having difficulty staffing. We all know that county police, they're going to have to add more people. They're not going to be able to do it. It's hard enough now for us as volunteers to respond. We do a damn good job for this community. But, when I'm coming to Mr. Leef to take to the developers... But, when I'm coming to Mr. Leith to take to the developers, what are they going to do for us? As the volunteer fire department, EMS, and county sheriff? They just want to build. They just want new people in, and they want to collect money. Okay? Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. But, we're not going to be able to survive 140-some homes with the population that's going to happen. And everybody that's around that area knows now that their taxes are actually going to go up because of the development. And I, for one, don't want to keep paying higher taxes. Nobody does in this room. Even, I know you guys don't either. But please, consider that these people have genuine hearts, and they're here. And, I wasn't going to speak today, but I think on behalf of the residents of Washington Township, I'm speaking on behalf of their public safety. And they need to be, know that we can be there when they need it.
My name is Gail Neeland. I live at 428 North, 325 East. And a few items that I'd like to discuss today is kind of a wrap-up of what we've all spoken at. And one of the things, of course, is some, I guess, disagreement with Attorney Leith on what they really want. Because his comment was, "This is something that we need and we want. And we want it because there's 2 million reasons why." However, that's an expense that will come back to the builder and the developer. For $2 million, we shouldn't have to be the people who make that builder whole. And it seems like we're kind of paying for our own, our own lots and homes all over again in this, if this were to go through. We have to also consider in our area, that when the wall, I'm sorry, when the city water and sewer goes in, Attorney Leith said that the owners there would not be paying Valparaiso taxes. They'd only be paying for the utilities. Now, how can that be? That might be the case for maybe three or four years, until the waiver kicks in that has been signed. The waiver that goes with that property forever. And they promised not to ever oppose any annexation to the City of Valparaiso. That's only a finite period of time. I spoke with the auditor's office this past week and confirmed with them that the tax rates would go up for Washington Township. Right now, or 2022, it was 1.4909. The tax rate for Washington Township, if there were to be annexed into Valparaiso, would increase to 2.6732. That does not include wheel tax, an additional tax that was just approved about a month ago, and the referendum that's in place that Washington Township did not get a chance to vote on. Yet we would be charged for taxes for both of those, and our children would be going to Washington Township schools. It's not necessary, and the perfect thing is to keep it like it is at an RR zoning and move forward with that. Adjust your cost of doing business some other way. Appreciate the time that we've taken today for you and strongly urge you to deny the request for the rezoning. Thank you.
All right, I'm up again, yeah. Dean Williamson, 333 East, 400 North. Just, I don't know if you guys remember this. You probably weren't even on the board back then. But it's been probably more than 20 years ago, and I can't remember the name of the subdivision that's there now. But it's the one that goes up off of 400 up to, by the church over there. Do you guys know the name of the one I'm talking about? Yeah, okay, Meadow Brook. We were in this exact same position back then, wanting way more houses on that subdivision than is allowed now. That's a beautiful subdivision right now. And there isn't any problems, but the houses are on way bigger lots than was originally plotted out for that. And the board voted against all those houses. So, you know, it's kind of a little bit of legal precedence there. And, you know, we know all about, we know that, you know, for a fact that the stormwater thing, that's a big deal for a lot of people, but we know that you guys won't let that slide. That's a, that's a huge deal. And, and the fact that the city is going to have to be working really closely with the county on that park area, because that's all water that flows to the same, through the same spots. The, the last concern I basically have is that intersection at 325 and 500 can barely sustain what it has, sustain what it has now. It's, I don't know how you could fix that without buying properties in that area to fix that, because it's going to have to be a roundabout or something much bigger than what it is now. There's drainage ditches on both sides of that road, and it's, it's going to be a tough one. So, just, just those things, that's all I have to say for now, so.
Third call. Anybody wish to come forward and speak against this rezoning?
I'm Bill Powers. Live at 411 North Phil Lane. And when I moved there, it was simply because it was a, a new place that was outside where all the traffic was and everything. Nice and quiet, suburban, you know, way away from all the stuff that's going on. And since I've been there, I've loved it, because when my kids all come up and down the street, that's what I love. But if they put that in and put North Phil Lane as a through street, Thank you.
My name is Tammy Vogel, 542 North, 450 East. I am just up here, because everybody has pretty much addressed everything that I was going to talk about, so, well done. The only thing that I would bring up is, two things, actually. Green space, I know that's a big happy point in this, in this development. I would say that if you stick with RR, everybody will have their own green space. They can plant their own gardens, they can have their pools, they can have their chickens, you know, they can do what rural residential calls for, and that's to live on the land, the open land that's, that is there. And then the other thing with the park, I know the park's going in, and I know people are kind of mixed on whether or not they want that there or don't want that there, but regardless, it's going in. So, I think it could be an asset for the community, but that being said, because of 500 and how busy that street is, there will be no way for children in the area to make their way over to that park because of how dangerous 500 really is, and 325. So, you know, really, Washington Township, it's great that it's going to be there, but we will have to, as always, get into cars and drive to the park that's going to be essentially right down the street from, you know, most of us, and certainly from the subdivision. But unless the county's planning to put in sidewalks down there, I don't know if that's the eventual plan there, but as somebody said, they would have to go into properties, because properties line 500 there as well. But that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Any others? Public hearing is now closed. We have some questions here that we need to have answered, so we'll turn it over to Bob, or whomever.
Do you want me to go, and then you can correct me when I fail?
I just wrote down a couple things that I can possibly answer, and that's, the rest of it I'd say is through Attorney Leith.
Okay, go ahead.
With me, I just want to do one correction. Hawthorne was not developed in Washington Township. That is true, but it was developed in Porter County. At that time, when it came in for the approvals, it was in the unincorporated area, and it came through the Porter County Plan Commission. Valparaiso annexed that when they were developing, I think it was Phase 3 of that particular development. But originally, it did come into Porter County. Question came up as, "What is a comprehensive plan? And why is the school density not considered within this comprehensive plan?" It's very simple. State law does not allow you to give consideration. State law gives you all of the items that you are allowed to consider within a comprehensive plan, and school's density is not one of them. Mentioned the checklist for subdivisions. We do have upstairs checklists for all subdivisions, whether it's an RR, whether it's a small one, administrative, minor subdivision, major subdivision, RR1, R2. We have checklists for every single development that comes through on this. So, yes, it is stormwater and development. So, those are the one things I had written down that I felt I should answer. So, at that, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Leith.
Thank you. We started this morning with a question with regard to 32%, and it doesn't add up. I had indicated, and our concept plan shows 32% open space, and that is true. So 32% of the acreage of the 80 acres is open space. From there, we have a road network, and we have other easements throughout the subdivision. As we indicated, stormwater is a great concern. And when we get to the next step, if you allow us to do that, we engineer detention ponds to capture the water and hold it back pursuant to all of those standards in the design, Stormwater Design Manual that Mr. Navatney will review our engineering plans over. All of those then are taken out, and then we have the lots. The 146 lots vary in size. There are corner lots that are larger, and there's some lots on the interior along a road that are smaller. They are all over the 11,000 square foot minimum requirement under year zoning. I would say that the average lot size is between 12,000 and 13,000. We can't have the 15,000 and still maintain that great, what we believe, quality-of-life issue for the residents, not only of the neighboring subdivisions that have the buffer yards and open space protections, but of the 146 future residents in the subdivision. They'll enjoy all of those 32% open space. So that's how we get to the math to say that we have 32% open space, but we have 146 lots on those. Not all of the lots, not all of the acreage falls into the lots. So, then the, the other comments, there was a comment, and I'll try and kind of touch on topics rather than necessarily go through, but the character and urban sprawl, I stand by my earlier comments. If we continue to require one-acre lots in Porter County, regardless of whether or not sewer and water is available, we're going to perpetuate urban sprawl. And this is an area that, in my opinion, is not in the suburban density. It's actually urban fringe because of its proximity. It's a quarter mile, a quarter mile from the City of Valparaiso. I think that if we think that this is not going to be in the City of Valparaiso in the next 20 or 30 years, that's probably not true. We know that in the last 20 years, the city has come three-quarters of a mile into Washington Township. That's likely going to continue as development continues. That's just the natural progression of cities and towns. They grow. What we're doing, in my opinion, is providing for a density of 1.8 homes per lot. If this were developed in the city, under the city standards, we're going to have much, much more than that. And as Mr. McClure alluded to, the stormwater requirements in the City of Valparaiso are not as stringent as Porter County's. So, we've got less drainage controls and more lots if we wait to develop, in my humble opinion. Is that a threat? It's not meant to be. It's just simply a reality that cities and towns will grow. And I believe that your job, with the help of your comprehensive plan, is to plan. You don't plan for today, you plan for the future. And that's what this request is about, is to allow us to extend the utilities into this area so that we can develop with smaller lots, maintain the great open space and character we think works well. It was mentioned by, by the others, I didn't mention it, but the City of Valparaiso and their park, 248 acres, I think that's a game changer, honestly. I think utilities is, is why we're here and why we can ask for this realistically and meet your comprehensive plan, but that city park as well makes, makes it easy. Unfortunately, I, Mr. McClure caught me and some of the folks from the public as well. When I referred to making Mr. Thompson happy and making Mr. Navatney happy, that was just a colloquialism for following the ordinance and the checklist. They have to be satisfied, that's the better word, that what our plan shows meets your ordinance. And trust your ordinances. As Mr. McClure says, it's absolutely true. It's the most stringent stormwater management plan in my three counties of practice that I see. And I've heard it said, it's the, the most strict in the state as well. There was a suggestion that I had misrepresented facts. If, if there is a misunderstanding, it certainly is not intentional. I don't believe I've made any misrepresentations whatsoever. I stand by my, my PowerPoint and my statements. And the suggestion that Hawthorne subdivision is not analogous, I think is, is not true. That's not misrepresentation. That's just simply a difference of opinion, in my, in my opinion. And Mr. Thompson commented on, on Hawthorne. There was also a suggestion that I didn't provide in Washington Township subdivisions in our analysis. That's not true. On one of the slides at the Plan Commission, we had four suggested densities or charted those. Interestingly enough, the two most dense of those four comparisons were Washington Township subdivisions. Augustine subdivision has been touted today as a, a model as to what this should be. The only problem is, is it doesn't have sewer and water. It's on septic systems. And as I've said all along, that's the game changer. There were, there were some comments with regard to stormwater and flooding, and as we've said before, allow us the next step, and we then have to comply with the strict standards of your design subdivision. There was some comments with regard to spot zoning. And there was a follow-up comment about 80 acres as a spot zoning, and that's exactly what I was going to tell you. I don't believe that 80 acres being rezoned is spot zoning. The gentleman was also correct. Spot zoning is not illegal in Indiana. It's bad planning. And he's right about that. And I'm not here to suggest that this is spot zoning by any means. I believe that spot zoning is when you take a different type of use and put it inside or around competing uses. Two homes are not competing uses. Two homes are not competing uses, regardless of their lot size. If I were asking to put a manufacturing facility or a gas station in this location inside of a residential community, that may be spot zoning when we're talking about three acres. We're talking about a residential change of zoning in a residential community that's 80 acres in size. I do not believe that that is spot zoning. Mr. Thompson indicated to you what your comprehensive plan is. The state law that he alluded to suggests that you look at five things. Four of them are subjective. I believe that the comprehensive plan, and I showed that to the Plan Commission in my PowerPoint, but your comprehensive plan suggests that this is suburban development area, and it suggests that in that area that you have two to three homes per acre. We are underneath that, we're 1.8, even if you acknowledge or accept the fact that it is exactly as the zone map suggests, or the comprehensive future land use map suggests. There was a suggestion that our concept plan is going to pick up a dead-end street from the south. That was put in by the developer of that subdivision under the rules of the ordinances at the time, and it's therefore good planning to provide for secondary access in the event of emergency services and traffic flow, and that's what we believe that your ordinance requires us to do, so that's what the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, the concept plan provided for. Again, that's all going to be worked out when we go to the Plan Commission looking at the subdivision requirements. There has not been an impact study done. Impact studies are federal laws, and those are required for extremely large projects and are typically geared towards environmental impacts. So we've not done any impact studies, and they're never required under any development, under any ordinance, under any classification. So there was a comment by one citizen that they had to go through a detailed review for what appeared to be a minor subdivision, and why can't we do that now before we rezon it? And what we've talked about is, we have to have the correct zoning. For her minor subdivision, she had the right zoning, and so therefore she went to the planning stage, and there was a review by just exactly what I described earlier, Mr. Thompson's office, Mr. Navatney's office, of her minor subdivision. We're going to have the same type of review, only she had three homes. Multiply that to get to the 146, and we're going to have that level of detail, that level of scrutiny when we have those reviews as well. Mr. Thompson commented on the schools. I'm confused, and I'm glad our auditor is here with regard to the taxes, but the development of a 146-lot subdivision will not raise the taxes, in my opinion, of anyone.
Let me try to maybe make sense of that. 80 acres, if it were to be annexed into the city, would then have a different tax rate than unincorporated Washington Township.
That is correct.
I believe that is most likely what the Auditor's Office reports, which was going to be one of my questions for you to answer, because I do think it's a good question for the citizens to understand the reality. The reality would be that this 80 acres would have the no remonstrance petition or the file. Those are good, I believe, now for 15 years.
Fifteen years, I believe.
And then they expire. But assuming the city of Alprezo finds itself in a position to annex this 80 acres, am I incorrect that it's only this 80 acres? It does not mean that your no remonstrance petition signing by your property owner developer does not mean that all the people in between the city line and 325 East are just going to be magically put into the city of Alpo. There would be a separate process for that.
To annex, under the current law, this property does not have the requisite contiguity, or it does not touch the existing corporate boundaries of the city of Alprezo, so it cannot be annexed.
And if it did, assume they got continued... Assume they can get... They find themselves in a position that that hurdle is met.
Yes.
What occurs to the surrounding property owners that are not in this 80 acres?
Well, if the law allows them to hop skip over to this 80 acres, then the surrounding property owners would not be in the city, and they would not pay city taxes.
To be clear, Alpo cannot annex anyone who doesn't want to be annexed, right? Who doesn't agree to, unless they've signed this waiver.
Unless they've signed a waiver. And there's simply no contiguity today. Now, there is a law about... We've all read about it with Aberdeen, and I've researched the requirements for that. And, you know, special legislation is not permitted in Indiana, so that law is written to target Aberdeen, but some of the things in that could possibly apply here.
I think our point is...
But they don't. They don't.
...the people who are in this room, who may not want to be annexed and have their tax rates go up, that's not going to happen unless they agree to it.
Can't happen. And even if it were annexed...
What do you say, this 80 acres?
Even if the 80 acres were annexed.
Even if this 80 acres were annexed, the residents here in this subdivision, in the heirloom subdivision, as well as anyone in Washington Township, will not pay the referendum.
That was my next question.
Because the referendum is a school referendum, and Washington Township has their own school district. And the city of Alprezo has residents in Washington Township who don't pay that referendum because they're in Washington Township and their kids go to Washington Township schools, East Porter County. So the school referendum never touches it, never becomes an issue, because the school referendum can't possibly touch Washington Township. If the city of Alprezo does annex into Washington Township, and they have, then those residents pay city tax rates and not the county tax rate.
But they can't be hostilely annexed.
They can't be hostilely annexed.
So if you're a property owner sitting across the street from this potential 80-acre division, unless you have a different want or a different agreement with the city of Alprezo, it's nearly impossible to be annexed hostilely.
Under the law, as it is today. An annexation law is changing. It's one of the most fluid areas of the law, certainly in the area that I practice in, and it's becoming harder.
Yes, I was going to say...
For it to be annexed. That's the flow.
The process has been trending towards more difficult.
Absolutely true.
In annexation, not less difficult.
Absolutely true.
But I'm trying to make sure the citizens understand, no matter what this board does. As the law sits right now, they're not going to be paying the referendum school rate in the city of Alprezo, because this is Washington Township and the children go to Washington Township schools. The only way you're going to... These individuals in Washington Township would be paying the city tax as far as... Instead of the unincorporated tax, would be if they were annexed, and the only way to really become annexed for... Instead of having an eight-hour law class right now, is it's nearly impossible to hostilely annex a private property owner. In this circumstance, we have presumably one owner or one corporation owner of an 80 acres. That's why this individual, because of the city utilities, is able to do the no remonstrance on the annexation, but the city of Alpo still needs to have, and I can't remember if it's an eighth or a quarter or whatever the contiguous... You know, whatever the... You've got to be able to... City's got to touch.
One eighth.
One eighth.
Twelve and a half percent.
And right now, we're... As we sit, and obviously things change, we're not close.
Zero.
But I want to be clear as far as the taxes and the annexation. I don't want... Just because this 80 acres could be annexed doesn't mean that there's a five-mile bubble around it that also just magically get annexed. It's this 80 acres that currently has the... Would have the no remonstrance sign if the utilities were extended. And I guess lastly on stormwater, because again, that's a hot topic, as it always is here in the Porter County, and that's why we have such a stringent stormwater design manual, but Mr. Navatney, I'm going to try to summarize from a high level what this developer would have to do if, in fact, this is... Well, no matter what, frankly, whether it's R2 or R1, but basically, from the four corners of this property, the property's still going to have to accept whatever water's coming to the property. Whatever water is then hits the four corners of this property is going to have to be grabbed, piped, or swaled, or ditched to a pond. That pond will have to hold it, or several ponds will have to hold it, let it settle, and then be released into our definition of a waterway at our release rate, in a nutshell. So there will be defined, basically, the water, again, will come to the 80 acres, it's coming anyway. Whatever water is falling on this 80 acres, all of that will have to be computed, and then there will have to be enough storage area on this property to hold it, to let it basically settle out so that we get the settlement out. We know that size of that pond will also be large enough for a 100-year storm event, at which rate it would then have a release rate, at our release rate, into one or more of the waterways, so therefore, we're in control of how fast the water is leaving this subdivision and how clean it is when it's leaving the subdivision. Is that... Have I misrepresented it from a high level that what basically is happening with stormwater?
That's pretty good for an attorney, Scott. The only thing that I would add is that receiving waterways, if it's one or two drainage ways, we also have to... The developer also has to show that those waterways have capacity and receive that discharge from the development site.
Good point.
So that's only a nuance that I would add.
So the downstream...
Yes.
Would have to have the capacity...
Correct.
...to handle the release rate that we're releasing this water.
Correct.
May I make a comment about one of the answers?
We're not in public hearing right now, but you could come up and... This isn't a public comment, because we closed it.
Just one thing.
Okay.
When Mr. Leith answered the question about misrepresenting facts, right before that, he said this property is a quarter mile away from the Alprezo line. That's assuming that that park has already been annexed, which as of today, has that park been annexed?
Yes.
It's already annexed? Okay.
Looking at the zoning map right now.
All right. Well, I guess we...
Any links up for you, you guys' discussion?
Yep. Any comments from the board?
I think one comment I have is that a lot of the arguments, and I understand nobody likes somewhere they've been happy living to change, but the arguments are assuming 146 homes or zero homes, and that's really not the option. Well, when we're talking about the number of kids, even though we're not supposed to talk about schools and the number of cars, and, you know, the difference here is not 146, is my only point. It's a lot less than 146. I voted for this on a Plan Commission, and a lot of the reason I did is because of the sewer and water. Stormwater is a problem out there, and this is going to help that. We will have fire hydrants in this subdivision. We will have fire hydrants where there is city water. We do have growth coming.
I just want to let everybody know, we've sat here for two hours listening to all of your comments and that, and now we're getting ready to speak, and I don't... We never really, you know, interrupted any of you at this time, so I'd like to try to keep it as civil as we can and so we can get through our comments, so thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
This does fit on our future land use map. There's 32% open space, which is well beyond... It's three times more than our required 10%. I don't believe it's spot zoning. It's only a quarter mile away from this mega park and city limits, and this makes sense. We need to manage growth, and this is an area that's well positioned for it.
You know, I'm going on my 15th year as a county commissioner, and, you know, rezonings are almost always, you know, there's a lot of emotion that can come with them. And in some cases, or in a lot of cases, rightfully so, but I've always felt, you know, that a rezoning is a request to change the law for someone. That someone, in this case, is a petitioner. In this particular case, it's 80 acres. It's not eight acres. It's not two acres. It's not 14 acres. And as a commissioner, sitting here listening to this today and going by the experience that I've been able to develop over the last almost 15 years, is I'm being asked to change the law for someone who I've never met on a development that I have yet to see, against the wishes of 300-plus people. I have no reason to... You know, my experience dealing with Todd over the years is, he's an honest man. My experience dealing with our Plan Commission, they do their job. But I'm not about to set up here and go against the wishes of 300 residents who I work for for the benefit of somebody who I've never met on a project I have never seen. That's how I feel.
Well, from my perspective, you know, as Commissioner Biggs said, these are always tough ones. I think that, from my perspective, I think the utilities are a game changer. I think that the open space of 32% is quite a bit for this type of development. We're getting into more and more of these type of things as we look into them, and we're trying to be... You know, we're trying to do the right thing, but I will say this, from the stormwater and the road perspective, I know we can take care of the roads. Actually, there's a good part of 325 that will be paved later this year. That was on the community crossing grants, which were set up last year and then are paved this year. So there's a good... It's 325 something, right, Jim? There's a community crossing grant paving job that will be done later this year. Because that road did paiser out. Paisers are rating system. It did rate out low, and it needed addressed, and as the county did, identified it two years ago, and it's now in the process of being paved this year. The one thing I will, you know, if we do move forward with this, the one thing that I do, I am adamant about, and I will be adamant about, is the stormwater. Because this board has done nothing since its inception in the last three years, is fixing problems that have been done the last 15, 20 years. So, you know, there's a lot that we've been fixing out there. We know how to do it now. We have our own engineers. We're not paying consultants. These people are paid by the citizens of Porter County, these engineers. As much as, you know, maybe some of you may be angry at us and the process, I can certainly, with much assurance, tell you that the engineers and the developers feel the same way about us, because we make it very... We don't make it difficult. We want it right. And we have several subdivisions now that have been in the subdivision planning phase for over a year, because they can't get it right. And we're moving... And we're moving them forward, we're not moving them forward until they do. So there's a certain amount of discipline that goes with all this. And there's a certain amount of trust that you need to have to be able to move forward. I know I feel very confident in this, in the county's abilities, to be able to deliver this subdivision. Right now, you've got 80 acres of water out there in a field that has no grass or anything, and it's going wherever it wants. And a lot of that was caused by the houses that are on that road. They disrupted that drainage pattern when those houses were done 30 years ago. I mean, that's, we deal with that up here all the time, too. So, you know, I look at this as an opportunity, if done correctly, and we will make sure that that happens, that we fix a lot of these problems that are out there. And a lot of these, we have been doing it. We have a subdivision on the north side of Alpo. It's in center Township, and it had a subdivision next to it that had the roads pointed out to connect on. We connect on and fix the entire drainage problem, because that original subdivision went in a 200-acre field, it was just 50 acres. So all the land around it was disturbed. So we went in with another subdivision next to it and fixed the entire problems out there. So no matter what you say, you don't have to, you know, agree, but new development does fix things. It really does. The traffic, you're going to have sidewalks in there, you're going to have fire hydrants in there. I just think that being so close to the city, being so close to this new investment of a park out there, and having the utilities, I know a lot of people don't believe in, that think septic systems can go on forever. Well, let me tell you something. We deal with this every day up here. People coming 15, 20 years after their house is there and their septic system fails. I'm not going to point fingers that they didn't maintain it. I'm not going to say whatever happened. But this is a big problem right now in this county. And now you're going back to these residents that have lived there 20, 25 years and saying, you now got to put in another system that's about 30 grand, and it's a mound system, and now you've got a mound in the back of your yard, and how do you think that's going to affect your draining, drainage on your site? And we get a ton of this here, a ton of it. And those people that are on those septic systems yell and scream at us, because they just think they should dig it up, you know? When the field, when your septic field is done, it's done. You neither add on to it, or if you don't have the room to add on to it, you put a mound system on, and you go vertical. And these are real problems that we see up here. I don't expect you to all understand that, but we do, and it's a big problem. In the last five years, 80% of the development that has gone on in this county has been with sewer and water, with utilities. So the actual homeowners now coming out and wanting to buy and put on septic and put on well, they don't want it anymore. It's not a preferred choice by people coming and wanting to buy. But with that, you have all these legacy problems with septic and wells, too. So, you know, it's a much, much bigger issue here, and I understand where you are all at, and I just think that good planning is good planning. I don't consider this spot zoning. It would be spot zoning if it was agricultural to R2, because now you're changing the use. You're changing it from farming to residential. This is just a classification within residential. And again, I think the 33, 32% open space is a big deal. That's a lot of ground within that subdivision to enjoy and have the benefit of. So those are sort of some of my thoughts that I wanted to talk to the group about and get those out there. So I think at that, at this point, I think, you know, we want to, you know, take the vote.
I will make a motion to approve the rezon on first reading.
And I'm going to second it. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second reading will be at our next week meeting, and I thank everybody for coming out.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Very much.
The bituminous oil. Fun stuff.
Yeah. We get started on the chips. Just, where you mentioned 325? It's actually 400 north near 325.
Well, I knew it was in that area. It was one of the bad roads that affected.
Yeah. It's actually 400 north in that area.
Another road to remember.
Yep. For the 8090, asphalt materials came in a tenth of a cent lower, but bitmat is in South Bend, so I'd like to accept both bids in case I need to send a truck to pick some up. It's quicker for you to get South Bend than Warsaw.
So moved.
Second.
I agree. I'm a little ahead of myself here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, dust lay, bitmat came in at 178, and asphalt materials at 105.9, so bitmat would get the dust lay bid. Fog seal, bitmat did not bid on fog seal, so asphalt materials has fog seal at 213.
Okay. How do those compare to last year, Jim? Just because of the price of oil and everything, just trying to get a gauge of where we're at today?
It actually went down. And once we specified our volumes.
Oh.
The price went down.
Okay.
So your recommendation is those issues that you read off out loud be what you're asking the commissioners to approve?
So is my motion to cover the rights.
Why don't you just remake it?
I rescind my previous motion and move to approve the current.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Go oil it.